Good evening. Welcome to the Regular Board of Directors meeting. It is June 10th, 5:30 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Director Boeckenegger has our acknowledgement.
Thank you. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kallits tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Director Perkins moves to adopt the agenda as presented, seconded by Director Garnewalt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First up, we have special recognition, Corinne Ormson and Karen Rivera.
Evening. I'm Corinne Ormson, the Specialist for Fine Arts, and this is Karen Rivera, the Art Discovery Coordinator. We're here tonight to celebrate visual arts. Earlier this spring, each school selected art to display and compete in our district art show. And all of the pieces there won an award based on their selection from their school to be at that art show. Our district art show is juried, and tonight we're presenting the top award winners to you. We will present each student and piece, and they will receive their certificate from Dr. Maloney. Our first student is Maria Ukova. She is our high school winner of the 2D version.
Thank you. It's great. Wow. The colors are beautiful. Was this one your favorite?
That's a feel.
Congratulations.
Something I re-- this was my favorite piece of the whole show, too. I was really moved.
Jay Rodriguez Hernandez is a-- are you going to carry the piece across? No. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at it, yeah. He's a student at Evergreen High School, and he won the award for the Superintendent 3D. And it's the skull with the mushrooms, and it's very impressive. So hopefully, it will be here all night, so you can look at it later. Our third student tonight is Madeline Vertisca. She's the Superintendent winner for the middle school division.
It's beautiful.
Blossoms, right? Beautiful. Oh, yeah. Really like that one, too.
Yeah. Our next student is Diana Fan. She is the Superintendent winner for 3rd through 5th grade. She was unable to be here tonight. Next, we have Joshua Roman Salas is the Superintendent winner for kindergarten through 2nd division.
Wow. Yeah. That's fantastic. Yeah. All right, wow.
Really good choice of colors. I really like that. The way that works.
You're a very good artist.
Gold.
Good job.
Is that a heart in the middle? Is that a heart in the middle? Wonderful. You're a great artist.
This is by Alex Snyder.
I like basketball. Where was that at? Where did you take that? Nice.
The composition looks really intentional.
Yeah. Good job.
It's the spirit of art education, and this was one, the one piece that the judges selected as embodying the spirit of art education. I should-- this is Heyuan Shin from Chehala.
You can get closer. Come on up. Wait, hold on. Hold on.
Our last award winner tonight is Graham Parley, and he's won the Sharon Springer Award. This is the spirit of education, of elementary art education. So this is, represents the joy of art in elementary school.
What kind of bird is that? Magical.
I think he's looking at me. I feel regarded.
We hope that you have an opportunity to come look at the art again before the evening's over. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to all the award winners and your families for coming. And the art at the library was amazing. The show was really, really amazing. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask a speaker a clarifying question or follow-up at a later time on an issue raised during public comment. First up, Angie Panda.
Good evening, Board Directors. I heard that I was missed, so I thought I would come. I'm here tonight to talk about questions that the community might have over the new resolution that's being put out today for the 2.5% raises for our non-union administrative staff. I'm curious how, when we have a district that is said to be in constant decline, when we are cutting programs, cutting staff members, cutting resources, we continually are giving raises in this one situation where there's no debate. I've been reading numbers, and it looks like in the last five years, the majority of you have been board members. And if this resolution is approved tonight, in the last five years, you all will have given 16.9% in raises to the admins who do not directly interact with our students. Meanwhile, we have programs gutted, we have children who are not getting the resources that they need, we have students who are asked to translate for others because there is no resources, and our unions are told there's no money to be met for their needs or for the needs of our students. But somehow, you five are the only ones that get to decide whether or not admins get more money on top of what they already get, not to mention the reorganizations where they get pay raises with slightly changed titles, which has happened a few times over the last few years. So my question to you is, if at first you don't succeed, find out why. Are you finding out why our students are not getting what they need? Are we actively asking the community members who rely on you because they voted you in to speak on their behalf? I know that in the last meeting, Senior Director Thompson talked about public records and the time that it takes to have people sit in the office and look through public records. That's me. I've been doing that because I'm not getting answers from anyone, and I'm finding that many others are not either. There are many, many months where I read emails from the board members that just say, "Thank you, your message has been received," or no response whatsoever. So my question to you is, have you done the due diligence to decide whether this is where this money needs to go? When we have so many needs in this district, and we have so many children who are relying on you to be the only voices to speak on their behalf? I sincerely hope that you take this to heart, and that even if you do pass this resolution, that you actively make it a goal to interact with the people who voted for you because they are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rocio Aroneta. That was the last name on our list. The next item on our agenda is the Board Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of the board's consent agenda as presented.
Director Perkins moves to adopt the Board Consent Agenda as presented, seconded by Director Garnewalt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? The next item on our agenda is our Superintendent Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda as presented.
Director Garnewalt moves to approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda as presented, seconded by Director Boeckenegger. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? The next item on our agenda is a Superintendent Report.
Might help if I turn the microphone on. Okay. Welcome to the last few days of school. Thursday's a big day. In my household, there is this last-minute scramble. I had to deal with it this morning, to turn in projects and assignments and make sure he remembers his books and all of those things. But there's also a lot of big smiles, too, out and about in the buildings, and kids are excited that summer vacation is almost here. So for graduation, for me, that's one of the most exciting times of the year as a Superintendent, and I'm sure for you as board members as well. So we all did seven graduations in three days, so Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So two Thursday, two Friday, and three on Saturday. I had the opportunity to share some thoughts with our graduates, who looked like a very organized Hogwarts fan club from my vantage point on the stage, and I used that as one of my jokes in my speech. And I did manage to get some laughs out of that out of the audience. I was so excited to see the graduates' faces as they walked across the stage and to shake their hands after they received their diplomas. They're just beaming. They, and their families, you could tell in the audience, were so excited for them and proud of them. So I've got a couple of statistics for you tonight. I asked some questions afterwards. How many did we actually graduate and walk across that stage? And how many people are held in that stadium, right? So we did have some varying size of classes, and so the south side of McKinsey Stadium, that's where we had all our families located, holds 42, 40, excuse me, 4,275 people. So when thinking back on the different graduations that we held there, that stand was pretty full. There was not a lot of empty seats in those stands, so lots of support for our graduates. Total EPS graduates was 1,753. It's amazing. Fantastic. So Union had 481, Heritage 371, Evergreen 360, Mountain View 340, Legacy 100, Hila 86, and Archway, we had 15 that were graduating. So I thought those numbers might be of interest to the board because we were guessing, like, how many did exactly are we meeting and greeting on the stage and shaking hands with? So it was a great three days. It was hot, but it was beautiful. So we were very blessed with great weather. In between planning for next year and right now, and then wrapping up meetings and reflections for this current school year, I was able to go participate in something called mock interviews at Union High School this morning. And this is for sophomore students. What they're doing is they're practicing their interview skills, and they came in, they brought prepared resumes, some of them had cover letters, and they were assigned to a volunteer interviewer in the library. So I had signed myself up for a couple of sessions, and so I was number 33, and they get a number, and they'd have to go find whoever that number is in the library and introduce themselves and sit down and get interviewed. And so I was provided with some interview questions, and I got to also meet, before the students came in, some of the other community volunteer interviewers as well. We had some retired teachers, retired administrators that had come back, current county workers, and that person had talked to her friends at work. It brought more people with her this year, and they're excited to do this. There are some people in the healthcare industry, there was a member of the National Guard, there were some emergency responders that were there, just volunteering their time. They took time, they either took the day off, or they already had that day off and planned, and they were there to help support our kids. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that community's support there. And they were joking, but they were actually serious. They said a lot of the students that they interviewed, they wanted to hire right there because they felt that they were so well-prepared and they really fit what they were looking for in their industry area. So there's lots of great events and celebrations that are happening and have been happening over the last number of weeks and the last month. And I know we have a good news report coming up today, so I encourage you to really pay attention to all those great things that our communications executive director is going to share. And we're going to highlight some things regarding athletics, and we're also going to highlight our Learn Here Hero recipients tonight, so I'm excited to have that presented to the board today. So that wraps up the soup report. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public hearing on Resolution Number 7054, Budget Extension. Hello, Jennifer.
I'm just here to explain a little bit about the budget extension that is on the resolution that we're asking you to adopt. So back in August, you adopted our budget for 2425. The general fund budget was about $432 million, so we had that amount of capacity to spend during the school year. And when we were doing projections about mid-year in February, we realized we were going over budget specifically in the special education area. So I had presented this to you back in March, that we were anticipating, instead of a $4 million deficit, actually having a $10 million deficit by the end of the school year. So what this budget extension does is it adds capacity to how much we can expend. So the resolution asks for an additional $10 million. We don't think we will need the full $10 million. We're actually only going to be about $6 million more than anticipated, but we need to, you know, have a little bit of extra just in case something's come in in the summer. So, yes, that resolution is giving us more capacity to spend in the current 2425 school year. And I just want to remind you that that will bring our unrestricted fund balance down to 4%. Our board policy is 5%, so we will need to work on building that back up in the following years. So I think I hit. With respect to special education, we are seeing a higher number of students with higher level of need, and so we have hired additional certificated staff and classified staff all year long to try to meet all those IEP, all the legal requirements that are necessary. And we just didn't anticipate the amount of new needs we would have in the district in that area. So are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the board?
I could ask, this is just to verify, because we had a conversation before this about just this, you and I, is that this is authorization to draw from our reserves.
Yes.
Right? It is not a levy of a new tax.
No.
It's not new revenue from the state. It's from the reserves.
Right. It is just the approval to spend X amount more than we originally anticipated. So, yeah.
Thanks.
And this will, ESD 112 has already reviewed this, it'll go to OSPI and become official. And then when we see our budget status reports, you'll see this new amount, the 442, for our total expenditures.
Yeah, I guess I have a question for the board. Since this is, our policy is 5%, do we need to amend that for time being, or? My understanding is the policy is 5% unless the board approves a departure from that. And so with this resolution, we'd be approving a departure.
Okay. Are there any questions from the audience? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of Resolution 7054, the budget extension for our general fund.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is just one year we're looking at? Yeah. I think it's just one year, yeah.
Jennifer?
Just for the 2425 school year, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And, you know, my sense of it is that as we're developing the budget for next year, that this is a better understood problem, thanks to the work that Superintendent Maloney and senior leaders have been doing around the zero-based budgeting. And so...
That is a good point. We have spent a lot of time with our special ed senior director, working on staffing and all of the special education needs to make sure this doesn't happen again next year. We want to make sure we're on top of making sure we have adequate certificated and classified staff to meet those needs, and we aren't trying to hire during the process. So we've put a plan in place now for next year for special education.
With that, I support the resolution. So.
All right. Director Perkins moves that we approve Resolution Number 7054, Budget Extension General Fund as presented, seconded by Director Boeckenegger. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our Teaching, Learning, and Equity Update with Dr. Fox.
Good evening. Let me put this away and start this next slideshow. President Witherspoon, members of the board, for the Teaching, Learning, and Equity Update this evening, we have some special recognition taking place. And I feel like the TLE recognition began with our student artists and the presentation of our artwork here. It's great when we can have students and their families attend your school board meeting. I also love it when we can have staff who are helping those students succeed be recognized and honored for the work that they're doing. And we're going to do that during TLE update. And I'm going to begin by asking Assistant Director of Student Services Jason Castro to join me at the podium. On May 20th, the Business Leaders Group, called Identity Clark County, along with families, friends, and colleagues, gathered to celebrate the 2025 Learn Here Heroes. And Jason Castro, it says was one of the heroes, is one of the heroes. You may have already read the Evergreen Public Schools page of this reception celebration booklet, but I'd like to highlight, quote, "Jason is a passionate educator and leader whose career has been dedicated to supporting student achievement. Driven by a vision to highlight and grow the sport of baseball in our region, Jason collaborated with coaches from surrounding school districts to form Clark County Baseball. This initiative culminated in the successful launch of the Baseballism Pacific Northwest Kickoff Classic, a multi-district tournament that brought players and communities together to celebrate the sport." And this is just one example of how Jason works toward the district's mission of belonging for each, success for all. We're proud to have Jason honored in this way, and I knew you would want to congratulate him and shake his hand as well. Let's give him a round of applause. Jason, thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for all you do for our students in Evergreen. In addition, the Learn Here Heroes Recognition Program identifies a community member whose impact on the lives of students is noteworthy. And although he could not be here this evening, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Kyle Rogers. Kyle brings vision, energy, and opportunity to the Evergreen Public Schools College, Career, and Technical Education (CCTE) program. And as Associate Principal at LSW Architects and Director of Design Commission, Kyle has played a vital role in shaping this internship-based program that introduces students to the fields of architecture and design. Since he's presented to you from this podium before, you also know that he serves on the EPS CCTE Advisory Board and is highly regarded by Director Kim Burhow for his contributions to the program. Quote, "Kyle's advocacy for student engagement and equity, particularly within Washington's largest CCTE program, has had a profound impact. His leadership continues to inspire a new generation of creators, innovators, and change-makers. We're pleased to see Kyle honored in this way." We're going to continue to recognize those whose leadership is positively impacting students and student achievement. Director of Student Services Kale Pylund is going to now share an athletic overview for the 2425 school year. Kyle? Kale?
Good evening, President Witherspoon, Board Directors, and Dr. Maloney. Tonight, we would like to recognize the success and hard work in an area that is critical to the continued work with the district's strategic plan, specifically in how we continue to develop experience for our students to grow in the goal area centered on building a culture of safety and belonging. One of the largest outreach opportunities that we are able to provide to help connect our students to their school communities is through our athletic offerings. Tonight, we would like to recognize the high school programs and head coaches whose teams won league championships in the Greater St. Helens League this past year. While wins and losses are certainly not the only metric we utilize in evaluating the success of our programs, it is an accomplishment that speaks to the dedication and hard work of the coaches and student athletes involved. In fact, moving forward, our plan will be to do this at the end of each sports season going into next year. So for those coaches who were able to join us this evening, please come forward as I read your name. Evergreen High School football head coach Christian Swain. Mountain View High School... Mountain View High School Girls Basketball Head Coach Chuck Knight. Girls Soccer Head Coach Aaron Tasker. Boys Golf Head Coach Dan Larson. Girls Golf Head Coach Ben Mathias. Boys and Girls Tennis Head Coach Nick Frost. And a special thanks to Coach Frost, as he has had years of dedicated service coaching the tennis programs at Mountain View and has decided to hang up his racket and, and will be stepping aside. Union High School Girls Basketball Head Coach Gary Mills. Boys Soccer Head Coach Jason Moore. And Heritage High School Boys Soccer Head Coach Davis Delamarter. Davis was unable to be here tonight, but that, that is actually the first league championship for boys soccer at Heritage High School, and they made their first appearance in the state tournament as well. So thank you, gentlemen, for all your work this year. This concludes the TLE update for the evening.
Congratulations to you and all your athletes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is textbook adoptions. Director Perkins.
Okay, this is the second reading of the textbook adoptions for AP Precálculus and for physics textbook for ninth graders. At this point, we've had our first reading or, or first public hearing about the curriculum adoption. I think we need to find out whether there have been any questions or concerns raised by members of the public and also to open the forum to see if there's any other public comment about these items.
I have not received any emails, questions, or phone calls related to this.
Nor have I.
Are there any questions in the audience?
So we need, we need two motions, right? Okay, so I will move at this point that the board approved the proposal to adopt the AP Precálculus curriculum materials presented to us. Those consist of, I'm trying to remember from two weeks ago. The, the teaching resource, Mathematic, for AP Precálculus, and then the supplementary resource, Precálculus, an investigation of functions.
Second. Is there any discussion? Director Perkins moves that we approve the textbook adoption for AP Precálculus as presented, seconded by Director Gronwald. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Thank you.
And the next, next option with the physics adoption is an adoption of physics, Patterns Physics, which is an online curriculum that we, well, we discussed it last time and had a workshop about it, which is another one of those open, I call it open source, but it's open courseware type offerings, meaning that it, at least the text comes at no cost to our program. I haven't received any phone calls or questions about it.
And the superintendent's office has not received any inquiries either.
Are there any questions in the audience? Do you want to come up?
Please come up.
Otherwise, the recording doesn't catch you.
I'm a vocalist. I just had a question on where this information is given out for people to know to ask. Is it only through the board meetings and the workshops, or is it given to the schools? Is it given on the board, board director's page or superintendent's page? If someone doesn't come to the meetings or go through the agenda or watch the meetings, are they aware of it? I was just curious.
Maybe you could talk about the legal requirements a little bit.
I mean, just as like, if you're going to be asking the community, did you ask the community? Or did you just assume that whomever comes to the meeting and then reads through everything would know about it and then know to ask questions if their children does physics or Precálculus? Are we actively, proactively reaching out to the people who are doing these classes to find out their personal thoughts or suggestions? Because it applies to them.
So is your question about the process of selection?
It's about everything.
I can speak a little bit.
Yeah, thank you so much. Because this is new to me, but I don't know any of this. I'm just curious if the people who would be affected by this are even aware of it. Please.
And Tilly is the Director of Curriculum Instruction, my, my boss.
That's all I have to ask.
No, you're fine. Is, is my boss, but I can speak a little bit to our process. I'm Crystal Wolf. I'm the science curriculum specialist here at Evergreen. So we go through a process when we review a resource, usually teachers or the curriculum department decides, like, we do need to go through a review process. I convene a committee of science teachers that then go through a selection of resources.
So they look over this?
And evaluate with a rubric. That then goes, once that committee decides which one they want to move forward, that process moves forward to our instructional materials committee, which is made up of community members, teachers, principals, there's a variety of people that sit on that committee. And then they review with a process, make sure that we've followed protocol. So those are the processes, and we encourage our community members to become a part of that committee if that's something.
How does one become a part of that? Is it?
I believe the, the school board appoints our
There's an application process?
The school board appoints members of the
Select the people that they want.
Yeah, and there are some students on there as well.
Okay.
Tilly, did I miss anything?
Nope.
So that's the process before it gets to the board, and then we had a workshop, a first reading, and this is our second reading.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Angie, the, the policies and procedures outlining all of this are in Policy 2020, and it's accompanying procedure. Yep, it's indigent.
Yeah, I'll look at that when I get access.
And just to clarify, the board only appoints two community members to the IMC, not the entire IMC.
But it is a thorough application process where everybody can apply.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and advance a motion to adopt Patterns Physics as presented to us.
Second. Director Perkins has a motion to adopt Patterns Physics as presented, seconded by Director Wilson. Any discussion?
Only to thank the, I thank Tilly and Crystal and the others for, and the IMC for their work on bringing this to us. I'm confident in the process.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for all the work on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? The next item on our agenda is an informational 2025-26 staffing document. This is a snapshot of our staffing for next year. It changes daily, so this is as of printing. The next item on our agenda is our good news report. Mr. Brenbach.
It's a coordination test I don't think I'm going to pass. Good evening, President Weatherspoon, Board Directors, Superintendent Dr. Maloney. Thank you as always for letting me present the good news, and we do have a lot. I'm not going to give all of it, but I do want to share with everyone and ask them to go to our social media, our Facebook and our Instagram. We've been doing our campaign end of the year celebrations, where we get to all 38 schools and one of their events and celebrate them. So we've been doing that for the last nine days, and we'll finish up on the last day of school. I want to, this first video here that you see there is a standout senior spotlight from Mountain View. Our video team of Matt Griffin and Wade Ferguson, they did six senior, standout senior spotlights, one from each one of our high schools. The one here is from Mountain View. Izzy started in our dual immersion program at Harmony and graduated in the dual immersion program at Mountain View. And what's, makes this even more special is she's going to go to school to study to be a dual-language teacher. So there's a link, though, to all six of these spotlights. I do recommend people go check them out. A great tradition that we have in our district from three of our high schools are the grad walks. Aaron Winter Song, who is our website coordinator and our best photographer, he does the grad walks, because he loves them and he's the best at them. So we have them from Evergreen, Henrietta Lacks, and also Heritage. And they visit elementary schools, of course. It's the perfect culmination, perfect way to end the year. They get treated like rock stars, and some of the best pictures are when they go back to elementary schools and their teachers are there, and they get to see them now as graduates. Very emotional time. We're going to slip down to our next thing. Fisher's Landing Elementary School, fifth graders, they went and visited Vancouver City Hall, where they got a tour from Mayor Ann and Councilor Sarah J. Fox. You can see the pictures. They got to go and see how government works and ask questions. A very cool tour for them and a field trip. Now we're going to go to our EPS Imagineers. This is an event that happened on May 27th at Ilahi, and this is the Imagineers Showcase. This is part of the EPS Imagineers Enrichment Club. Nine elementary schools took part in this. And at this showcase, students have been working individually or in teams to create, it's basically, it's STEM learning, and they create these wonderful projects. Simple things, like they're just trying to solve the world problems now and in the future. Yep, there are things like, how do we end pollution? My favorite is, how do we grow food on an alien planet? So some big thoughts from, from these elementary school students. And as you could see, it was a great event where a lot of people came out to check out the showcases. And now, as I mentioned, that we are doing our end-of-school events. I picked out a few that I thought were really cool. At Columbia Valley, they had a BMX assembly, which we've had a few of these in the district, but there was one day, as we know, in the last couple of weeks that it rained. One day! That was the day they had this. So they had a pivot and somehow moved this inside, and the stunt masters are the ones that did this, and they just did a great job of figuring out how to keep doing their tricks, not injure themselves or any students. They did jump over staff members, you can see there, and everyone still had a great time. And while it was not just exciting, they also do teach bike safety, and they were strong. I enjoyed this. They, they pushed the importance of communication. Our Frontier Middle School Band took part in the Portland Rose Festival Junior Parade. I do want to thank Jennifer Ferguson, the band director. She shared these photos with us. They won a gold award. And then finally, we're going to go all the way down to where we have a Hall of Famer. I went too fast. Sunset Elementary School's Kinsley Kaufman, a fifth grader, was selected by AAA Washington to be included in the 2025 AAA Schools Safety Patrol Hall of Fame, which is pretty cool. Her teacher, you see there in the middle on the banner, that's Mr. Ortiz. He's the one that nominated her, so a very cool honor. I don't know a lot of fifth graders that are in Hall of Fame, so I thought that was really cool. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda are board comments. Any comments from the board? You can start.
Yeah, I enjoyed the graduations that I was able to make, and also wanted to thank for, Angie, for her public comment. And just so you know, I forwarded you an email because I had a question as well on the IPD, the 2.5%, just comparing it to the bargaining units. And they were coming in about 5% this next year, so it seemed reasonable at that point. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I also had an opportunity to participate in the mock interviews I went yesterday. Spent some time at Union High School. Great kids. I've done it in the past. I've done it several times, and I just, the group that I got were all fantastic. So I too probably would have hired all of them. I really got to know them, and they all did a great job with preparation. The other thing I wanted to mention, because Craig's team does an awesome job this time of year, well, all year, but really this year and the beginning of the school year, when they highlight all of the school celebrations and the events. And one of my favorite things on social media, it's on Instagram, when they do the hats, the graduation hats. The kids spend so much time decorating them. It's so much fun for us to see them at graduation, and then when they highlight them on Instagram, and they always put the, the comments, it's, it's a fantastic post. So thank you for that.
I had a chance, I guess, May 29th. That was the last, after the last board meeting. It was in the, it was in the Friday update, but to attend the substitute appreciation dinner and awards, I guess, they had salads out for everybody who came to that, and just get to know some of the folks who substitute, both as parent educators and educators and bus drivers. And it was just, it was nice to meet them. I saw some familiar faces, because some of my friends are in the subpool, so a couple of my friends came to that. And I just, I guess, want to express appreciation for everyone who steps up to serve kids. I, let's see, and then, you know, the other big events was absolutely graduations, which I love the music performances. I think having Archway there and how much heart they put into the, the graduates put into their, their ceremony and their completion, it really, it just fills my cup. It's very nice, and I'm glad to have been able to attend all seven this year.
I also am very glad I was able to go to all seven graduations, especially Mountain View, where my son graduated. And I wanted to thank the staff for making each ceremony so special for families and students. It's just every year, it gets better and better, and this year I didn't cry, so I'm super proud of myself. Even though my son came across the stage and I didn't cry, so I was very proud. But it's the best part of the year, I think. That, the first day of school, but these graduations are pretty amazing and very special. I also wanted to mention that this year I was able to volunteer for the school year at Crestline Elementary in a first-grade classroom. And I volunteered in first-grade classrooms with all three of my kids and their teachers sitting right there, Mr. Sheewee. And it's, I guess it's been about 10 years, maybe 12 or 13, I can't remember how many, between first grade for them and first grade for now. And things have changed a lot in these classrooms, but what I noticed is the same is how amazing the teachers are and the staff and everybody in the buildings. And I just really appreciate it, and it was a really great year for me to be in that classroom. And they said I can come back next year. So I'm very happy. So the time is 6:17, and the board is going into a recess to sign documents. After the recess concludes, the board will go into an executive session to review the performance of a public employee under RCW 423110G. The start and end times will be announced once the board has finished signing documents and the meeting reconvenes. Thank you very much.